You’re live.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn’s early light What so proudly we hailed at the twilight’s last gleaming? Whose bright and bright star through the peril thus spied O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the first thing in air, lit up through the night; that our flag was still there. O say, how the stars spangled banner yet wave O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave! On the shore, in the sea, through the mists of the deep, Where the foggy host in dread sirens repulses; What is that which the breeze or towering sea Has impervious to its o'ering? Oh, how when seals have disclosed, now it catches the glee Of the morning's first peal; in the glorying glare That now shines on the stream, 'Tis the star-spangled banner O'er the big way! O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave! O the steed-hatter, where free men shall stand, Be it in the love-hoofs, at the horse-dance-ownation! Bless with it thee and peace, may the heaven rest your land! Praise the God that hath made and preserved us the nation! Then conquer we must, when our cause it is just; And this be our motto, in God is our trust. And the star-spangled banner, in triumph shall wave O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave!
When Israel was in Egypt's land,
Let my people go!
Oppressed so hard they could not stand,
Let my people go!
Go down, Moses, way down in Egypt's land! Terre aule, terre aule!
Let my people go!
The Lord said, Moses said,
Let my people go!
Is not as might your firstborn say?
Let my people go!
Go down, Moses, way down in Egypt's land! Terre aule, terre aule!
Let my people go!
For 'twas a dark and dismal night,
Let my people go!
When Moses led the Israelites,
Let my people go!
Go down, Moses, way down in Egypt's land! Terre aule, terre aule!
Let my people go!
When they had reached the other shore,
Let my people go!
They sang a song of triumph.
Let my people go!
Go down, Moses, way down in Egypt's land! Terre aule, terre aule!
Let my people go!
My name is Dennis Speed. On behalf of the Shiller Institute, I want to welcome you to today's event. We are now going to hear a second musical selection just to say something about those of you who have come to our events for the first time. When you come to a Shiller Institute event, you will be always confronted with music at the beginning of it, unless for some other reason, for some other... There's something else that intervenes. There's a reason for that. What we stand for and what you will see today is the change of the character of the American people and the change of the character of all citizens in the world to aspire to the idea that it is through beauty that one proceeds to freedom. We're going to hear now from Frank Mathis, who's going to be doing a selection in German, Franz Schubert, "Andi Musik". And Frank, I think, if you come up, you have the English translation you're going to read for us.
Mark Green.
Yeah, Mark Green's piano.
The song is entitled "Andi Musik", or "To Music". "You gentle art, during how many gloomy hours, When life's wild spear ensnared me, You have aroused my heart to warm love. You've transported me into a better world. Often has a sigh escaping from your heart, A sweet, holy chord from you, Opened up for me the heaven of better days to come. You gentle art, I thank you for it. You gentle art, I thank you."
[Singing] Oh, golden kunst, Digne wie die grauen Stunden! Oh, mich es lebend, wie der Grausen schwebt! Was nun mein Herz zu warme Liebe zurbe, Was mich wie neue Bessere verhüllt, In meine Bessere Welt entwirrt. Gott hat ein Tor, ich zerflecht, Nach deiner Tracht flusste. Mein Süßter, dein Lieben, oh, oh, oh! Wenn ich mir wärs, wenn seid mir erschlossen! Oh, golden kunst, ich danke dir das Glück! Oh, golden kunst, ich danke dir das Glück!"
In order to provide the context for today's meeting, I'm going to read a statement which was prepared for the meeting by State Senator Richard Black, 13th District, State of Virginia, Senate of Virginia. "On September 11th, 2001, America suffered the greatest terrorist attack in modern history. In its aftermath, federal government commissioned a top-level investigation that was intended to get to the bottom of the attacks: Who organized them? How they were carried out? How they were financed and executed? And so forth. Seldom has an inquiry held such momentous significance for our nation and its survival. It seemed obvious that the publication of its highly anticipated contents would naturally be widely and publicly disseminated at the earliest moment. Strangely, 28 pages of this vital document were covered up and their contents were never revealed to the public. This has led to deep suspicions that the 28 pages are an indictment of the undercover actions, activities, of a supposed ally of the United States and that their disclosure may reveal that the U.S. targeted the wrong nation when its troops were sent to attack Iraq, which had little connection to or tolerance for Al Qaeda's sinister activities. Under our founding documents, we, the people, are supposedly sovereign, but we cannot accurately assess the wisdom of our government's actions if vital information is withheld from us. The federal government has no excuse for withholding the 28-page segment of the 9/11 report. It is time for the American people to know the full story behind the decision-making process for nearly a decade's worth of foreign policy. Warm regards, Richard H. Black, Senator of Virginia, 13th District." Our first speaker today is Diane Sayre. Diane has been a congressional candidate twice in the state of New Jersey. She also serves as a policy committee member for the National Policy Committee of LaRouche Political Action Committee. Diane?
Thanks. I'm sure that everybody here has heard the expression "living in a nightmare", and probably most of us would agree that in many ways, right now, from ISIS to Ebola, drought facing the Western states, we are experiencing exactly that: living in a nightmare. There's one very important aspect to that expression which I want to emphasize today, which is that a nightmare is a dream. It's not reality. And when you wake up, the nightmare is over. So what am I referring to? Well, as people may know, today, it's possible that 45,000 Kurds may be exterminated by ISIS in the city of Kobani as we speak. They're projecting millions of people to die of Ebola. And in Southern California, it's said by the head of the Southern California Metropolitan Water Authority that their reservoirs will be completely out of water within 18 months. Furthermore, many people agree we're headed for the biggest financial and economic blowout ever in history. So isn't this reality? These disasters can destroy the human race and can destroy civilization. But after they occur, or after we prevent them from occurring, what will be their impact on the future? These events, in and of themselves, have no impact on eternity because they do not define what it means to be human and they do not have to determine the future development of mankind and the relationship between the human mind and the universe. Lyndon LaRouche has emphasized repeatedly that the past does not determine the future and that reality itself does not lie in what you perceive with your senses. Let's look at the Thirty Years' War. People may have seen paintings from the late 1600s. This was a bloody war and in all the paintings of that time, everybody in them is missing arms and legs. How did this war end? The Treaty of Westphalia, a treaty of nations where everyone agreed that each nation would act in the interest of the other. Tony Blair has spent his entire adult life trying to eradicate this. Now, is the Treaty of Westphalia the logical outcome of people exterminating each other for actually a century? Was it the result of rage and vengeance that people came up with a treaty which said we should each act in the interest of the other? No. The Treaty of Westphalia came from human creativity. It was something new that did not exist in the past. This breakthrough in human social relations came from the future and it ended what was really a century of religious war. So how does that work today? Well, many centuries ago, Nicholas of Cusa, who was a great genius and really the founder of modern science, was developed in his Concordantia Catolica the concept of the consent of the governed. This was 300 years before the Declaration of Independence. He came up with this idea because his life was dedicated to understanding God and the relationship between man and God. And he concluded that if man had a direct relationship to God, that a government should have to do with the consent of the governed and not be a dictatorship or a tyranny. Later, Leibniz. Alfred Wilhelm Leibniz, in the tradition of Cusa, argues in an essay on justice and natural law that justice is a combination of goodness and wisdom and that goodness is that which contributes to the perfection of sensible substance. In other words, we are good when we contribute to the perfection of other human beings. In our Declaration of Independence, as people know, which Leibniz had a lot to do with, it reads, "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness; that to secure these rights governments are instituted among men, deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed." And Leibniz was very clear, by happiness, by felicity, he meant the search for wisdom. So we have a government in this country that holds a sacred our right to self-perfection. Now, are these true principles? Are they still true today? Will this still be true long after Obama, Bush, Cheney have all been forgotten? Right now, there is a global American revolution which is being blacked out of the U.S. media. The desperate financial interests who gave us Bush, Obama, and the 9/11 attacks are trying to prevent this American revolution from sweeping into the United States, where I think it will find fertile ground in the hearts and minds of the American people, even as we have been dumbed down and beaten down by pessimism since the events of 9/11/2001. On July 15th in Fortaleza, Brazil, the leaders of five very large nations, Brazil, Russia, India, China, and South Africa, met and agreed to form a new bank for economic development. But it's not just a bank, it's a paradigm. It's a paradigm based on the principles of Leibniz and Cusa and the work of LaRouche over 40 years. In 1982, when Mr. LaRouche met with President Lopez Portillo of Mexico, Portillo agreed, he nationalized the banks, he agreed to try and create a debt bomb to destroy the International Monetary Fund and the World Bank. But Henry Kissinger stepped in and stopped the other nations from joining him and Portillo was ousted. Later, in Dira Gandhi, a close friend of the LaRouches, formerly head of the Non-Aline Movement, a prime minister of India, was assassinated in 1984. And in 1989, Mr. LaRouche himself was thrown in prison. The Anglo-Dutch financial oligarchy had not yet become as degenerate and decrepit and bankrupt as it is today. Now with these agreements among the BRICS nations, each nation instead of standing alone and being cut down is standing with a block of nations. And many other nations are being drawn into this new gravity. Many of you here attended the speech of the new Prime Minister of India, Narendra Modi, where you saw 19,000 people packed into Madison Square Garden and another 3,000 people gathered outside. Why? Because he is in the tradition of Mahatma Gandhi, although he is of a different religious background. And his commitment, one, they were the first nation to get an orbiter into Mars orbit on the first try, which is a source of great pride. And also, he is launching a Clean India campaign. He wants to clean the Ganges River. He wants to get the sewage out of the streets. He's building 800 million toilets. Every Indian is going to have indoor plumbing by the anniversary of Gandhi's 150th birthday. So the population of India is very optimistic about the future. China just landed a rover on the moon as part of a five-step program to get samples from the moon with the prospect of mining helium-3 for the development of nuclear fusion. Russia is also interested in helium-3 and they're building a series of floating nuclear power plants to bring energy to remote parts of the planet not yet inhabited by human beings. South Africa is building seven new nuclear plants. Nicaragua is building a second Panama Canal, which is going to employ 2 million people in a nation of 6 million where currently they only have 800,000 people with regular jobs. And Egypt, under President El-Sisi, is now building a second parallel Suez Canal, which will employ 1.5 million people. Unlike many of the projects here, the day after he announced it, there are 7,500 people on the ground digging. There are now 55 construction firms involved and it's being financed entirely by the people of Egypt, purchasing bonds. And the people of Egypt were so thrilled to be part of building the nation and Islamic and the Pope of the Coptic Church are united and telling every young person to participate in this. So within six days, they raised two-thirds of the money they needed for the canal. Now President Obama recently met with President El-Sisi here at the U.N. He told El-Sisi that he should bring the Muslim Brotherhood back into the government. I think El-Sisi said no. And then finally, Argentina, where people may know the president Christina Fernandez de Kirchner is now, has just built a third nuclear power plant. She stood up to the vulture funds which were trying to extract a 1,608% rate of profit from the country. She said, "We're not going to pay." And our New York judge, who she hints may be senile, Judge Greasy, as I call him, Greasty here in New York, ordered that Argentina has to pay and that he's found the whole nation of Argentina in contempt. She courageously told the people of Argentina that they may next try to arrest her while she is here, that she is being told that ISIS has threatened to assassinate her. And she said, "There's no such evidence. If I am killed," she said, "look to the north." But she is not standing alone. She has the backing of two-thirds of the world's population. So I am convinced, if more Americans were aware of the fact that 5 billion people on this planet have woken up and gotten out of the nightmare, that Obama and half of the Congress would be thrown out in a flash. I think these developments are being blacked out from the U.S. media for exactly this reason. And I would ask that all of us here carefully consider what Jeff Steinberg and Terry Strata have to tell us and commit ourselves to winning this war. I think the people of the United States can be won over to defend the future of mankind, one, because these are the principles upon which our nation was founded, and more importantly, because our nation was founded on principles designed to promote human creativity, which is actually the passion of all people on this planet. Thank you.
Just one announcement for those who were watching this via Google Hangouts. If there be any technical problem and the feed happens to go down, fear not, we will have captured the entire feed. We'll be able to get it later. That's just in the event that that may occur. We wanted to make sure the public service announcement that we let people know that. Before introducing the next speaker, I want to read a statement prepared for this meeting by Congressman Walter Jones. I think everyone here should know that Congressman Walter Jones is the author of "House Resolution 428", which is the resolution that's calling for the release of the 28 pages, of which we've spoken earlier. He says, "The recent anniversary of the tragic events of September 11th, 2001, has once again raised the myriad of questions that still remain unanswered regarding that terrible day. After 13 years, it is long past time for the American people to get the full truth about the worst attack ever committed on American soil. The need for transparency is greater than ever. To that end, I have created a bipartisan coalition of members dedicated to declassifying 28 pages of the Congressional Joint Inquiry into 9/11 that were initially removed under President George W. Bush and have remained classified under President Barack Obama. Having read these pages myself, I know without a doubt that their publication would not pose a threat to national security. Rather, these pages contain information that is critical to our foreign policy moving forward, that the American people have the right to know. More importantly, this information will help to bring closure to the many individuals who lost family and friends in the attacks or survived the attacks themselves, many of whom are here today. Along with Representative Stephen Lynch, I have introduced "House Resolution 428", which calls on the President to declassify the 28 pages. This bipartisan resolution has garnered support This bipartisan resolution has garnered support from not only current members of Congress, but also from former Senator Bob Graham, who co-chaired the Congressional Joint Inquiry and has been calling for the declassification of the pages for years. More recently, the co-chairs of the 9/11 Commission—Governor Tom Kean and Congressman Lee Hamilton, who used the Congressional Joint Inquiry to inform their investigation—have called on the pages to be declassified. In addition, the resolution has gained perhaps the most important endorsement of all, that of the 9/11 victims and families of victims. I want to sincerely thank each of you for your advocacy and ask to you to please contact your member of Congress and ask that they join in support of this effort to provide the American people with the truth. On September 9th, there was a press conference in Washington DC, which was attended by the next speaker, Teri Strada's husband, William Gilde, at the World Trade Center. She has campaigned as co-chairman of a group in New Jersey, the 9/11 Families for Truth. And we are more than deeply honored to have her here with us today, Teri Strada.
My name is Teri Strada. It's an honor to be here today. I do co-chair the National 9/11 Families and Survivors United for Justice Against Terrorism. On behalf of over six thousand family members and survivors, I would like to address the 28 pages with all of you today. Last December, Congressman Jones and Stephen Lynch did introduce this House Resolution 428, and I want to tell you why House Resolution 428 is so important and why we need it to pass. I did suffer a heartbreaking loss on 9/11. My husband, Tom, was killed while working in the North Tower of the World Trade Center for Cantor Fitzgerald. Tom was a wonderful, loving, kind man. We had three young children. They were seven, four, and four days old on September 11th. And we miss him each and every day. Because of 9/11, my children are three of three thousand children who suffered the loss of a parent at the hands of terrorism and are growing up without a mother or father today. Ground Zero Rescue Workers are sick and dying to this day. Even after thirteen years, the death toll continues to rise. I stand here today because I don't believe people should get away with murder, and that is exactly what has happened. The people who gave financial, material, and logistical support to the nineteen hijackers are free from any accountability. There has been no justice, and no one has been punished for the murder of thousands of innocent men, women, and children here in America, in our country, on our soil. I stand here today representing all Americans. We cannot continue to allow our government to keep classified the most crucial facts of the worst terrorist attacks on American soil. Incredibly, for over a decade, we have been denied the truth behind who else was part of the planning and implementation. Why was the decision made to keep the truth from my family and the American people? Sadly, the answer has become painfully clear. Our government is more concerned with protecting the Saudi regime from embarrassment or any public penalty than protecting the American people from terrorist complicity. Contrary to what our government has allowed us to believe, Al Qaeda did not act alone. Long before 9/11, there was a complex financial network of wealthy individuals, banks, and so-called charities established to give financial aid, material, and logistical support to the nineteen hijackers, who lived here amongst us for nearly two years, renting apartments and cars, taking flying lessons, and buying first-class plane tickets to practice and then carry out their games acts of murder. From Los Angeles, San Francisco, California, Little Falls, Virginia, and Sarasota, Florida, 9/11 operatives were supported through a network of members likely named in those 28 pages and many others not named. They had help, and a lot of it. We believe those pages will show where that help came from, Saudi Arabia. This is not an academic question. We don't simply want to know the answer. The truth must be exposed if our leaders are to navigate the thorny problems of an increasingly dangerous world. Al Qaeda is pure evil, and so are their bankers. The war in Afghanistan was a direct result of 9/11, where it has cost the American taxpayers nearly $2 trillion and over 2,000 soldiers' lives. Is it possible that after years of war, we will never know who else was behind the terrorist attacks here that prompted this declaration of war? For thirteen long and painful years, we have been shut out from knowing who else is responsible and have requested our presidents to unlock the truth behind the half-story we were told and expected to believe. We are tired but undaunted in our fight to bring these facts to life. Although every day I ask myself, wasn't the violent murder of 3,000 souls enough to make our government do the right thing? Well, apparently not. This classification of the Foreign Support Chapter of the Joint Inquiry Report was ordered under the Bush administration and has continued under the Obama administration. There's plenty of blame to go around, and it's time to stop coddling rich oil states funding terrorism. It's time for the world to know who funded and is still funding Al Qaeda and ISIS and other terrorist groups. As Congressman Jones and Lynch have both said publicly, they do not believe anything in this report jeopardizes national security. These are honorable public servants, and I believe them. It is our responsibility as victims, family members, and survivors of 9/11, and concerned citizens like you, to fight for the truth to be told. It is our government's responsibility to expose the other criminals of 9/11, the bankrollers, no matter who they may be. We are not alone in our request for these 28 pages to be declassified. On August 1st, 2003, ten years ago, Senators Chuck Schumer and Sam Brownback asked for the declassification of these 28 pages. Forty-four other senators signed that letter, including former Secretary of State Hillary Clinton and current Secretary of State John Kerry. I've never done this before, but I do have the letter here, and I'd like to read it today. So this is the letter that was written to George Bush back in 2003. Like I said, signed by Chuck Schumer, Sam Brownback, and forty-four other senators. We have it here. Dear President Bush, we write to respectfully request that the Bush administration declassify a key 28-page section of the Joint Inquiry into Intelligence Community Activities before and after the terrorist attacks of September 11th, 2001. While we respect the reasons to keep information classified, be it the protection of sources and methods or the maintenance of the integrity of ongoing investigations, such purposes can be accomplished through responsible selective redaction rather than effacing the section's contents totally. According to the Joint Inquiry Report, the contents of the redacted pages detail specific sources of foreign support for some of the September 11th hijackers while they were here in the United States. Unfortunately, because all but two pages of the entire section have been deemed too secret for public disclosure, the American people remain in the dark about other countries that may have facilitated the terrorist attacks. It has been widely reported in the press that the foreign sources referred to in this portion of the Joint Inquiry analysis reside primarily in Saudi Arabia. As a result, the decision to classify this information sends the wrong message to the American people about our nation's anti-terror effort and makes it seem as if there will be no penalty for foreign offenders of the hijackers. As you are aware, Saudi Arabia's banks and charities have been used to funnel money to Al Qaeda. Its matterish schools spew hateful, anti-American rhetoric to would-be suicide bombers across the Middle East, and fifteen of the nineteen hijackers were Saudis. Given these facts, protecting the Saudi regime by eliminating any public penalty for the support given to terrorists from within its borders would remain a mistake. If we are to protect our national security, we must convince the Saudi regime to get tough on terror. Keeping private its involvement, or that of any other nation, in the September 11th attacks is not the way to accomplish this goal. We respectfully urge you to declassify the 28-page section that deals with foreign sources of support for the 9/11 hijackers. That was written ten years ago, and we now are pushing for Obama to hopefully release them. We believe that not declassifying these 28 pages is far more of a threat to our national security than keeping them classified. We have written to the President on three separate occasions. He has remained silent to our letters. He has not responded at all. We are now writing to the National Defense Department and so forth, and we've been told that they are looking into it, and that's all the information we've gotten, but no action to date has taken place. I thank you very much.
So why if that letter was written ten years ago? And why if all of the documentation is available in various ways within the House of Representatives? And why if there are some eighteen or so House of Representatives members, congressmen, who read these pages and have all concluded that there's nothing within them that needs to be classified? And why if the Chairman of the Commission, of the Joint Commission, who chaired it, who is now a former senator, former governor, also Bob Graham, has said he wants them released? And why if you live in a free nation called the United States in which these things are supposed to be done on your behalf, both the protection of the country and the investigations as to the attacks on the country? Why is it that nothing has happened? Jeff Steinberg, Cedar Counterintelligence Editor for Executive Intelligence Review, has a forty-year history of investigations, worked with Lyndon LaBrushe for over forty years. Lyndon LaBrushe being the founder of Executive Intelligence Review. Jeff has written extensively on many, many topics. If you go online and you Google his article, Saudi Arabia about Prince Bandar and 9/11, you'll see some of the material there. And so Jeff is going to come and give us the answer to that question, why? Jeff?
I think it was three or maybe four years ago, I was just back in Leesburg, Virginia, and stopped into a local store where I happened to know the owner. And we started talking, and the first words out of his mouth were, "Where were you forty-seven years ago today?" I looked at him like he was probably crazy or something. I mean, how am I going to remember something that happened forty-seven years ago? And then I realized that the date was November 22nd, and that forty-seven years ago to the day was when Kennedy was assassinated. And every instant of that day came back to my mind vividly. It was one of those rare moments of collective shock and trauma that hit an entire nation and had consequences beyond anybody's imagination that, you know, have gone on for years and for decades afterwards. For the 21st century, for the early years of the 21st century, September 11th, 2001 was the same thing. And I bet if we had time to simply go around the room, every single person here—I don't see anybody who probably wasn't born yet on 9/11/2001—would similarly be able to say precisely, almost minute by minute, what happened. And so I think to begin to get at the question of why it is that here we are thirteen years later and we're still scratching our heads as to why a president from the opposing party would have been so adamant about making promises directly to family members, friends, close collaborators of Terry, were in the room, in the Oval Office, when the president was asked directly in one of his first weeks in office, "Will you declassify the 28 pages?" And he said to their faces, "Yes." At a later event, inaugurating the 9/11 memorial at Ground One, other members of the family group raised the exact same question with the president, and they got the same answer. Yet, in point of fact, there's no indication whatsoever that President Obama has any intention of acting on the basis of the demands of the families, the demands of forty-six current and former members of the US Senate, leading representatives of the House of Representatives, and the overwhelming majority of the American people. And I think—I've had a number of discussions in the last several months or so with members of Congress who read the 28 pages. And I'll give you a little bit of a secret about how even that came about, to get an idea of the sort of bodyguard of lies and cover-up that has prevailed around these 28 pages for the last thirteen, fourteen years. Probably five years ago, colleagues of mine filed a Freedom of Information Act request demanding the declassification of the 28 pages. And it went through various stages of the FOIA process, and after about three and a half years, it finally reached the level of a National Security Review Board that's actually at the National Archives in Washington DC, which is the sort of Supreme Court over Freedom of Information Act requests. And they were the ultimate judge on whether or not these pages should be declassified. And what we got back was a rather stunning letter from them. They said, "We're sorry you wasted your time for all these years, because this is not an executive branch document. This is a document that was produced by the US Congress, and the particular jurisdiction we have for review is only over the executive branch. So we're sorry you wasted all this time, but basically you've got to go to Congress and ask them to get the documents declassified." Now here's where it got tricky, because we showed that letter to a number of members of Congress, including Congressman Walter Jones. And so they said, "Well, fine, if it's a congressional document, we know it was classified by the White House. It was reviewed at the Bush-Cheney White House, and that's where the decision was made to put the lid on the 28 pages." But it is a congressional document, and so initially Congressman Jones and Congressman Frank Wolf from Virginia contacted the Chairman of the House Intelligence Committee, Mike Rogers, and the ranking Democrat, Dux Ruppertsberg, and they said, "Well, it's a congressional document, we want to see it." They went back and forth, and it was literally a pitched battle for a period of three months. And finally, in July of last year, Rock agreed that the members would be allowed to actually come in and read the 28 pages. They were practically forced to leave their clothes at the door in order to get into the secured room, where they were basically no pencils, no recording devices, absolutely nothing, except you're sitting there in a room with two federal agents watching over you, and you read the 28 pages, you leave. So at this point, well over twenty members of Congress, at least, and those are members that we've spoken to directly, who we know read the pages because they told us. And the response from those members of Congress has been pretty much universal. Number one, they said that we absolutely agree that there is no legitimate basis for keeping these 28 pages classified. And number two, they said that by the mere act of reading those 28 pages, lives were changed, and we have been forced to rethink everything that we thought we knew about the history of this country and the world over the last twenty or so years. Now, the members are very careful, because they know that they are treading on very dangerous territory. And so they have been extraordinarily careful not to say a word about the content of those 28 pages. 28 pages. And the only thing I can conclude from some other comments that were made by members, I won't give specific names, but several members said that these 28 pages have clearly implications for our relations with Saudi Arabia. But there are implications that are even more disturbing that relate to the internal politics and internal security of the United States. We can't say anything more, but Stephen Lynch at the press conference that Terry and a number of the other family members were at, said something very similar, that his entire view of the history that he's not only followed, that has lived through as a member of Congress over this past several decades, is completely different in his mind, having read these 28 pages. Now, what that tells me is that while there are significant things about these 28 pages that we do know, there are a lot more elements within this that we don't know, and I'm not going to even try to speculate on what they may be. But I think it just convinces me that the urgency of getting these 28 pages released is clearer in my mind than it has ever been. And I'm convinced that there is a lot more in those pages than simply what we know or surmise about the role of the Saudis. The fact of the matter is that much of the involvement of officials of the Saudi government, of the Saudi Arabian General Intelligence Directorate, of the Saudi Ministry of Defense, leading members of the Saudi royal family who are owners of major banks and charities that poured money into the 9/11 hijackers, a lot of this stuff is pretty well-known, frankly. Elements of what's in the 28 pages were very cleverly presented by Senator Bob Graham in his 2004 book called Intelligence Matters. And what he did is provided a narrative of his experience as Chairman of the Joint Committee. At one point, he described how two of the chief investigators for his 9/11 Joint House-Senate Committee were both FBI agents on loan from the Bureau to work on his staff. They were very serious, competent, and honest investigators, and they also happened to know the ins and outs of how you read an FBI document, having written many of them themselves. They were out in Los Angeles at the FBI office, and Senator Graham described that he received a phone call from them, and he was down in Florida back in his district at the time, and they said, "You've got to go to a secure phone line. We can't wait. We have to tell you right away what it is that we just discovered in these FBI files." And so ironically, he had to go to the local FBI office, which was the nearest place where there was a secure phone line. And what they told him was that they had found certain documents that made it very clear that the Saudi ambassador at that time, Prince Bandar bin Sultan, the son of the Saudi Minister of Defense, had provided funds that had gone to two known Saudi intelligence officers in the San Diego area, and that those funds had been used to finance at least two, probably three, of the 9/11 hijackers. And that this was, you know, deeply disturbing, and that the material was there in the FBI files. So this was a big deal, and in the course of describing that experience as Chairman, he was able to get out some very important information about this whole investigation and some glimmers of what's in the 28 pages. A few days later, the same two FBI agents on his staff called him back and said, "You've got to get to the FBI office again and get on a secure line, because we found something else that's really, really stunning." And when he got to the secure phone, he was told that two of the 9/11 hijackers, in fact, the first two hijackers, to arrive in the United States, who had received the finances directly from the Saudi ambassador in the United States through two known Saudi intelligence agents, and that the money had been used to pay for the rent, to buy a car, get licenses, and even to start pilot trading for two of these hijackers. It turns out that the same two Saudi intelligence agents had arranged for them at one point to get rooms in the home of another Saudi businessman who was living in the San Diego area. And it turned out that that Saudi businessman, who was hosting two of the 9/11 hijackers for months and months and months, was an FBI informant. So there were layers to this story, and now, of course, this is months after the 9/11 attacks, and none of this had been previously made public. It was not made public by the FBI or anybody else. So all of these elements started coming together, and these are things that are out there in the public. We know that the two original 9/11 hijackers named Nawaf Al-Hazmi and Khalid Al-Midar arrived directly on a flight from Kuala Lumpur, Malaysia, where they were presumably at a meeting where the whole 9/11 operation was planned out. They were met nearby at Los Angeles International Airport by two Saudi intelligence officers, Omar al-Bayyumi and Osama Bosnian. Now, these guys were known entities. They were known to be working for the Saudi government, yet they also had very unsavory track records of their activity in the United States. In particular, Osama Bosnian came to the United States on a tourist visa in 1980 in Stagium. So in other words, he was working for the Saudi government. He was an illegal. And in 1992, while he was living in Washington DC, he hosted a reception for the blind-shamed Omar Abdul-Raqman, who was involved in the 1990s World Trade Center bombing. So he had basically a profile as a paid employee of the Saudi government, and at the same time was himself under watch by the FBI. We happen to know that through some contacts of our own inside the Arab diplomatic community in Washington, that at one point Bosnian was busted on cocaine trafficking out in Southern California. This was prior to the 9/11 attacks. And there was a direct intervention by the Saudi ambassador, Prince Bandar bin Sultan, to make sure that the charges were dropped and he was basically let go. So there's a rich profile here. The other Saudi intelligence agent named Omar al-Bayyumi was here in the United States from the early 1990s as an official employee of the Saudi Ministry of Defense. And he worked for a Saudi-owned company called Dala Aviation out in California. He was a no-show employee. He was drawing $3,000, $4,000 a month, plus a much, much larger expense account, yet never showed up on the job. And when some company executives filed a complaint about it, the Saudi Defense Ministry said that if they made any move to remove him from his position, that all of their contracts in the United States would be cut. So there are many, many levels of this story that are absolutely known through a variety of other avenues. They all point to a publicly documented, absolutely damning case against the Saudis. There's other elements to this story as well that came up through a somewhat separate process of investigation that began a number of years ago, having to do with corrupt business practices involving the British defense company, BAE, and the Saudi Ministry of Defense. And again, the central figure in the story was Prince Bandar, the same Bandar who sent at least $50,000 to $75,000 in checks that are documented to the 9/11 hijackers through al-Bayyumi and Bosnian, beginning in 1998, but extending through the whole period that the terrorist hijackers were in the country. In 1985, Prince Bandar negotiated a major arms deal between Britain and Saudi Arabia. It was called Al-Yamama, which is the Arab word for the dove. And under this arrangement, which was a barter deal, BAE Systems, over a period of years and decades, provided the Saudi Ministry of Defense with about $40 billion in military equipment. And on top of that $40 billion in actual equipment, they padded the bills for another approximately $20 billion that were in the form of payoffs and kickbacks to the Saudis, to various princes and officials of the Defense Ministry. In return, the Saudis provided 600,000 barrels of crude oil a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year, beginning in the spring of 1985, and presumably continuing right up to this day. Now, we looked up, very simply, on publicly available charts, what was the actual price on the international spot market for that oil? Because basically, under the agreement, under this Al-Yamama program, British Petroleum and Royal Bet Shell took delivery of that oil and immediately turned it around and sold it on the world market. Well, between the $40 billion in arms and $20 billion in bribes, there was still in excess of well over $100 billion in excess profits from the sales on the spot market of this oil. Unfortunately, Prince Bandar is a bit of a narcissist, and so he was preparing to leave the US and come back to Saudi Arabia, and was going to try to get himself a very, you know, cushy job in the inner circles around the royal family. And so he commissioned a friend, a British writer, who he had gone to school with in England, to write an official authorized biography. And there was an entire chapter in that book that read about the fact that this Al-Yamama deal was a stroke of genius, because after the arms were delivered, after the oil was sold, it was $100 billion or so that resided in various offshore bank accounts to finance different kinds of, quote, "anti-communist" operations around the world. The first one they began funding in a big way was the Afghan Mujahideen, some of which later morphed into Al-Qaeda. So you've got a larger story here, as bad as the Saudi story itself is, as bad as the cover-up and complicity by American officials is. There's deeper issues here that are yet to be really fleshed out. During the period that Bandar and his wife Princess Haifa were funneling money just to these 9/11 hijackers on the West Coast, he was at the same time receiving at minimum $2 billion in commission fees on the Al-Yamama deal that he brokered between Britain and Saudi Arabia. And it happened that the bank that they were using for those transactions, Rigs National Bank in New York, came under investigation for all kinds of corruption charges, and as the result of that, bank records were seized. And so there's an available paper trail, it was a congressional report and other documents on this, showing funds being transferred from the Bank of England, the accounts of this Al-Yamama project, through the British Ministry of Defense, into Bandar's personal accounts at Rigs National Bank in Washington DC during the period that all of the prep work for the 9/11 attacks was going on. Now, you know, what are the levels of complicity in terms of different people, who knew in advance that this was happening? There was another incident that occurred several years after the 9/11 attacks, actually not that long after. On March 28, 2002, one of the top three or four people in Al-Qaeda, from the time of the 9/11 attacks, was captured in Pakistan. And he was the first trial balloon for the renditions and order boarding and all of this stuff. His name was Abu Zubaydah. And at one point, since they were having trouble getting any information out of him, they decided they were going to really scare him. So he had no idea where he was. He'd been basically captured, and his, you know, face was covered with a hood, and he was taken somewhere. He didn't know what part of the world he was in. So they set up an interrogation room that was designed to give the appearance that he was in Saudi Arabia. And they had several members of the interrogation team who were Arab and spoke fluent Arabic and spoke with a Saudi accent. And so what they expected was that he was going to really be terrified, that he was back in Saudi Arabia, and that he would be tortured to death, way beyond anything the CIA had done to him. And to the shock of the interrogators, the minute that he came to the conclusion that he was in Saudi Arabia, this great big smile came on his face, and he was immediately relieved, and he started rattling off the names of various Saudi princes who needed to be called up right away, because they would make sure he was free, because there was a terrible mistake here. And the interrogators were completely shocked. They took the information down, and they checked it out, and it turned out that they were, in fact, the private home phone number and the private cellphone number of a very high-ranking lead member of the Saudi royal family. They went back into him and said, "Well, the numbers were fake, they don't work. Tell us what you really know." And he started rattling off the names of a half a dozen other members of the leading circles in the Saudi royal family, who said, "All of these people are my contacts, they know who I am. Call them up, and they'll tell you to let me go." So in other words, what I'm saying is, is that we are looking at something much bigger, and the 28 pages represent the window into an entirely different picture of how the world works. And it goes way beyond simply political embarrassment, you know, "The FBI messed up and, you know, let an informant house two 9/11 hijackers. How could that a terrible, terrible thing have happened?" Well, you know, the FBI went to great lengths to cover up the story. They put the FBI informant in the Federal Witness Protection Program, they whipped him off under a new identity, and Senator Graham's researchers never got a chance to interview him. They couldn't even interview the FBI agents, who were the case handlers. So there's lots of things that happened that could be written off as bad judgment, bad mistakes, bureaucratic cover-up, all of those kinds of things. But the sense you get from the people who read these 28 pages is that there is something much, much bigger in their content that opens up a big issue. Clearly, one question is the continuing US relationship with Saudi Arabia. Clearly, another issue is that the Bush-Cheney administration was hell-bent on overthrowing Saddam Hussein, and so Saddam Hussein became the target to go after as revenge for 9/11, although there was no evidence he had anything to do with it. It's as if following Pearl Harbor, Roosevelt ordered the bombing of France. I mean, think about it. Fifteen of the nineteen hijackers were Saudis. Two days after the 9/11 attacks, they were escorted out of town. And in fact, the Saudi intelligence officers, who were directly implicated in the 9/11 attacks, were in fact directly involved in coordinating the arrangements to get the members of the Bin Laden family and other Saudi to get the members of the Bin Laden family and other Saudi royals out of the country on the very first flight that was allowed in the air after the 9/11 attacks. So while many people say, "Yes, the 28 pages because it will reveal more of the truth about the Saudis," that's totally true. And it almost goes without saying that widespread public disclosure of that will force a fundamental change in the U.S. relationship with the Saudis, perhaps even with the British, around the whole nature of Londonistan and the nature of this Al-Yamama deal, which created some of the funding mechanisms that may very well, we don't know for sure, but may very well come in with other funds for 9/11. But my gut sense is that we're dealing with something much bigger and it makes it even more absolutely urgent that we move heaven and earth to get these 28 pages released. The families are fully active. Many of you may have seen the press conference that took place in Washington on September 9. Terry was there with two of her children and there were a number of other family members. One of them, was it Matt Salino? Yeah. Basically stood in front of the camera and said, "Mr. President, you're a liar. You promised us you'd release the 28 pages. It hasn't happened." That's my definition of a liar. So we've moved this process forward, I think, a great long way. The House of Representatives has a bill. There's a growing number of sponsors. My understanding is that there are a number of additional signatories that will be officially added as soon as Congress comes back at the end of the first week in November. So the momentum is there. And I just want to end by saying that it is of monumental importance. We will not get to the truth of many things that are horribly wrong in this world and in this country until we get these 28 pages opened up. And as I say, don't be surprised to find that there are things in there that go beyond your imagination in terms of what it was that those investigators discovered and what it was that was covered up. So we have a very important mission on our hands. And I want to make sure that people don't underestimate the historic importance of winning this fight and winning this fight in the immediate weeks ahead.
We constructed the presentations as a whole today for the purpose of leaving a full hour of questions. We also did something else and I want to now point out what has just actually happened. Most Americans are in the habit of going to all sorts of things and never thinking about what they are doing or thinking. You may say that you're an exception and hopefully you will be. We'll see in a moment. There's a reason putting it that way. The problem that we have is to actually have an idea of the limitations that we ourselves experience in our inability to think about what we are thinking about. Let me show you what just happened. We started off with the Stars Bank banner. We did that to remind you where you are. You are in the United States. We did Go Down Moses to tell you where you are at this moment in history. You're renegades and you are the slaves. And we did I'm the music to give an indication of the way out. Now notice we had something happen. Diane got up and she talked about Tony Blair and the Treaty of Westphalia and ending it and something he said in 1999. And then she talked about two figures that you may or may not know about, Gottfried Leibniz and Nicholas Foucault, and said something about a community of principle and the importance of the American Declaration of Independence, so forth and so on. What did that have to do with the rest of what we were talking about? What does the issue of the founding of the United States and the policy and concept behind the founding of the United States have to do with why we're here? Well, Terry Strata dropped a bomb in the middle of her speech there. She said, "I've never read this before, but I think this is a good occasion to do it." And she read you a letter that said that forty-four of the most powerful political officials anywhere in the world in history had stated that something had to be released concerning Saudi Arabia in 9/11. In 2003, when there was a war that was starting with Iraq, and nothing happened. And then we asked the question, "Why?" And when Jeff came up, he said, "Well, yeah, the 28 pages are important because of what they have to tell us about the particulars of what happened with Saudis and FBI." But really, if we're going to do anything in this country to regain this country, we need this as a way of unraveling the kind of crimes we know about that happened on November 22, 1963 and everything that happened subsequent. And he presented a method of counterintelligence. Now, what's the purpose of what we just did to you? The problem involved is the American people have to be deprogrammed, starting with ourselves, starting with people in this room, but starting with me and you. Those of us who have been in the Shiller Institute and been associated particularly with the figure Lyndon LaRouche are used to this. Though often people find that they are upset when particularly he says certain things. And I want to say something about something he did fifteen years ago. Fifteen years ago, Lyndon LaRouche made a two-hour video called Storm Over Asia in which everything that is happening right now was said, down to the wire. Every single thing going on right now is in that tape. You can go on YouTube and take a look at it yourself. Every single thing. There is no war in southwest Asia. There is a war against Russia and China. There is no actual war against Syria. There is a war against Russia and China. And the intention is for that war to become thermonuclear if necessary. And that is what you are sitting in the middle of. As we go into now, questions and answers. What we're going to ask that you do, you can ask anything you want. But we were going to ask you to reject the parameter of what you think you are thinking. Instead of saying, "What do I think? What does Jeff think?", ask this question, "How do I think? How does Jeff think? How I need to think?" So we're asking you to do that because in this way, we can put you to work during the following. The 28 pages can be gotten. They can be retrieved. In this period before an election, a lot of people are very sensitive in the Congress. This does not have to take months or years. If we focus on it and if we bring organizations, institutions, individuals together, these pages can be retrieved. If they are retrieved, all the trees in the forest will fall. So all the other things that many of us maybe here worried about in various ways will all be accessible if we successfully combine our efforts to do this. And so this campaign is something that we're launching here today in terms of your participating as a group, a kind of a new form. I wouldn't call it a coalition. We can call it, shall we say, a united front of various people who may have different levels of agreement on different things, but who can see that if we can get this done, this makes a major, major difference in our country. And so now we're open for questions. And anybody who'd like to ask a question, just stand, identify yourself and go ahead and speak. I think we can hear you.
We have a microphone.
Oh, great.
Esther, can you hear? My name is Lorraine Abbey. I'm wondering whether the Architects and Engineers911truth.org, are they with this concept? And are they petitioning for the release of the 28 pages?
The person that has his hand back there can answer that. Somebody pass the microphone back.
My name is Lester Jameson. And the answer is definitively yes. Architects and Engineers is very much behind the release of the 28 pages. No matter when it is, they'll have content up on their website. And that's just the start of several positive developments that are going to be very productive in the coming days.
Is David Mieswinkel here? Right there, okay, fine. Let me just introduce him. He's with a group which is called 9/11 Aware. New Jersey's 9/11 Aware. Go ahead, sir.
All right, thank you. And thank you for having this wonderful, informative session. And thank all the speakers. I go back to around 1972 when I was a graduate student at NYU. So I'm familiar with Lyndon LaRouche. And when I was in the Army in Germany in '74, I ran into people that I knew in New York passing out papers in lines Germany. And I can say that the Lyndon LaRouche organization has been spot on as far as making an analysis and trying to create a better world for everyone. As far as the 28 pages, that's very essential to get that information out. I started an organization last year and it was based on the full New Jersey 9/11 Aware. It's a website, newjersey911aware.org. Because in New Jersey, there was 681 victims. The Port Authority of New York in New Jersey owned the Twin Towers. Seventeen of the 21 counties had victims. So there were people that died in seventeen of the 21 counties. They had anthrax attacks down in Trenton, Hamilton, West Windsor area. And you had plotters supposedly elect terrorists up in Patterson. So you had the full ramifications of terror. So certainly we'd like to see what's in the 28 pages. What we did last year and this year, we sent letters to the governor asking for new investigation, asking the state under the Tenth Amendment right, because the federal government wasn't doing that, to have the states get involved and New Jersey having the legal connections to that they do something. So we sent two letters to the governor, letters to the Attorney General. We met with the Committee of Investigations, gave them a 64-page complaint that we drew up, outlining all the deficiencies in this report, the 9/11 Commission Report, which is a total fraud, as everyone knows. And we then wrote to all the county prosecutors. Remember, there's seventeen of 21 counties had victims. They have some jurisdiction. The residents were killed in 9/11, seventeen of the 21. And the response pretty much was a negative, no response at all, except we didn't get a letter from the governor's office eventually saying that they referred our complaint to the Attorney General, remembering that the governor was the attorney, or the U.S. attorney. I'm sorry, the U.S. attorney. He was the U.S. attorney during that advance within three months of 9/11 that basically settled that investigation. So in this document, there's no mention of some of the things we talked today. In fact, there's probably about a hundred reasons to have a new investigation. But the 28 pages is something that the average person can say, "Yeah, transparency, that's a good thing. Let's have it." It's a hot issue and it's an issue that can be pushed. Now, going to New Jersey, I know Diane's from New Jersey and I see Bruce here and Elliot's from New Jersey. But New Jersey has an incredible karmic history. George Washington spent over half of the American Revolution in New Jersey. Over half of all the battles fought in the American Revolution were in New Jersey. The battles of Trenton and Princeton revolutionized America and they are very important for our freedom today. And the state of New Jersey was the first state to ratify the Bill of Rights, which has been under attack ever since 9/11. So New Jersey has an interest and we're going to be meeting our small group to try and re-energize within the next ten days in New Jersey to start, hopefully, getting out. We tried to educate the legislators. Now we want to educate the people and especially concentrate on recorders in the colleges in New Jersey. So I support everything you said today and I thank you. And I know your history and I salute you. Thank you very much.
Before we go to the next question down the front, I'm reminded from Google Hangouts that we have people who are watching this from various places, I guess. We've got California, Texas, there are all of the places. So we have a question from Ian, who asks, "What effect do you think the release of the 28 pages would have on the effort to reinstate the Glass-Steagall Act?" Diane's going to answer the question and give the context of that.
All right. First, I actually wanted to say one thing which I forgot, which bears on this. One of the ways that you know that now Obama and all these other places are isolated, but it's actually the United States which has become very isolated and very small with the developments of the BRICS countries. And Kristina Kirchner at the UN Security Council made a big point. She was seated two seats away from President Obama, looking him in the eye and saying, "If I were running a war on terror..." And she raised the fact that our so-called war on terrorists seems to be doing nothing but creating more terrorists. She said, "I would want to know who is supplying ISIS with weapons and where do they get their money?" So these questions, the question of the 28 pages and the role of who financed 9/11 and the question of the Glass-Steagall Act are actually very much intertwined. Because as people may be aware, the Glass-Steagall Act separates the banks. It's a Chinese wall between commercial savings and loan activity and speculative activity. And if Glass-Steagall were to be reinstated, it would require actually doing something like what last happened under FDR, a kind of bankruptcy reorganization where you'd have to go through the books of these banks. And I think if you went through the books of these banks, you would see very interesting details about drug money laundering, which is a big source of funding terrorism, and other sorts of activities, including money flows to ISIS to and from the Saudis, the deal that Jeff talked about earlier, the Sal-Yamama deal involved in this. So the two things are very much intertwined and I think they would come as a pair. I don't know what's in the 28 pages, so I don't know exactly what kind of interesting things are going to come to light when they are revealed. But I think these two things absolutely go together.
Yeah, down there. Also, let's see, I see two other people with their hands up. So we go here and there and then in the back. Okay, those will be the next question I can give. Oh, I'm sorry.
It can go after the question. There's a... It's important that everybody here, and this isn't hard to remember. It's called 28pages.org. If you go to that website, there is a wealth of information, but there's also how to go about reaching out to your own congressperson. And you can share this on Facebook. You can share this at any level of social media that you may have contact with because getting more and more members on board and it takes constituents to go to their members before they'll actually pay attention to anything. But 28pages.org, Private Citizen in Texas started it. And it's a wonderful website that everybody here should take a look at and share as much as possible. And we'll go back to questions.
Hi, my name's Scott Austin. And I was, there's a new documentary, I'll leave it for all of you because it's on YouTube now. I think it's called The New Pearl Harbor. It's about four and a half hours long. Has anybody in here seen it?
It's here.
It's about four and a half hours long and it takes in everything. It goes after The Seven Demongers and... And it talks about the, I mean, it's so down to the minutia of everything from 9/11. My, I guess, my, I don't know where my question's going, but it's a...
Get the name of the film again.
I think it's called The New Pearl Harbor. It's four and a half hours long. I've showed it three times with different people watching it. To sit through four and a half hours, it's three different sections. But they, I remember in '03, I went, they had the first hearing and they had 10 people on a panel. This, it's not like it's anything new. We know that the building's going down in 10 seconds. We know that the building's going down in 10 seconds, the Little Hall in ground in Pennsylvania where the plane was supposed to disappear, from the cell phone calls, they're duplicating cell phone calls on three cell phones from '01, where how could you have a cell phone from 30,000 feet to the tracking of the planes, to the, what went into the Pentagon? They go through everything meticulously. And what I found is, that, I was talking to Maggie before we came, is that there's, I've been to three of the things on our Private Citizen Engineers, and you have like 30 or 40 people. And for the average person to retain all this information, and still get on with their lives, it's so upsetting for them. And to try to share this information, you know, even watching it with people, and their jaws drop, and I go, "You didn't know that about 9/11?" It's just, it takes so much effort, you know, talking about how do we share this? And, you know, I say, "Okay, just, I'm not sitting through four and a half hours, you know, how do you get people..." You know, and then to, like I was going to say, Ralph Scholman has done that thing on the '92, '93 bombing, where he said they have $4,600 from the FBI, and the chief was framed, and that guy was entrapped, and they supplied him with the bombs? So how do you, how do you...
Yeah, I'll get into that, I can answer that, and we'll go on. The whole purpose of today is to not get caught in that trap. That's the exact idea. In fact, more than that, the point is that there are members of Congress who are extraordinarily vulnerable on this question of the 28 pages, precisely because this is a unity between the families, a promise made to the families not kept. Members of the Congress who have stepped up, members of the Senate who are hiding and know the story, in a population which is now being confronted with being told that they have to give the Saudis a half billion dollars, so the Saudis can train people to help out fighting ISIS. See, so you're in, you have a situation which is relatively rare in American politics, a completely clear matter that can actually be redressed. You usually don't get this, and that's why, that's the exact point. So we're going to avoid all of what you said by just going right at what we're doing. I would want to go to you, and then I have a question, I'll read for people watching, you will get to number two question in just a moment.
Yeah, my name is Alvin, and I'm an activist with the LaRouche Political Action Committee. And in 2011, during that winter, I was active in the Occupy Wall Street operation. I was in the demands group. And what they succeeded in doing in the months that I was down there is they demanded that they make no demands, and they were very successful at it. During that time, Lyndon LaRouche, after the assassination, the murder of Gaddafi, called out and said, "Everyone better change their plans, because you're now in a thermonuclear stage, where a war could break out at any time. This is the intention, they're moving through, the next stop is Syria, and so forth." Now, this past summer, I took five Wednesdays of my summer and went down, along with some of the people here and others throughout the country, to intervene and put a stiff foot up the ass of the members of Congress on some of the things you're hearing here, Glass-Steagall, the 28 pages, and you can never leave out the impeachment of Barack Obama. And each visit was more and more interesting, you could say, and also quite shocking. Many examples, one I can give you is that the representative of a congressman from Connecticut said, "Well, actually, he can go to war on his own, and the Congress just has to stop funding it." Things like that were up and down the line. And I'm saying this because it's time for people here to think about joining us, and getting down there, and putting a foot up their behinds. We know the truth, we know it has to come out. Dennis mentioned how vulnerable they are, and they need to be reminded of that. And I don't know, so what I'd like to hear from anyone on the stage here, including Terry, about pulling to Washington and working to organize people is, what else you can say to people about that, so that hopefully some of us after this will sign up for it and be available to do it.
What else can we say that we've already said here?
Well, in terms of Congress congressional meetings you might have had with representatives, or anything else on the subject that I just raised.
I, well, what I just said a minute ago, the 28pages.org, the website, my microphone, open the mic.
I think the best way for people to get involved is to go to this website, the 28pages.org, that this individual in Texas has set up. He provides the instructions on how to go directly to your own congressperson and tell them that you want them released, and then he tells you how to stay on their tail until you get an answer, because no answer is not acceptable. They do work for us, they do answer to us, and you have to sometimes insist that you want an answer. I haven't even gone to my own congressman, and I was sitting there saying, "Why haven't I?" So I need to do that when I get home, and ask him to join the 28 pages, declassification, the House Resolution 428. So this website will help anyone navigate how to go about reaching out to a member of Congress. Now, to go outside of your own congressperson, it's difficult. We do it all the time, because we're a national organization, so we can sometimes get their attention, but it's not easy. So they don't answer to individuals outside of their jurisdiction, which is unfortunate, because this is a national, you know, concern, this is about terrorism financing. They should answer to anybody that has any question about it, but they don't. So I say, go to the website, it's the best tool we have right now to get out to the masses. And you spread it, you share it, and hopefully, you know, it'll continue. We're trying to raise money right now, my co-chair and I, so we can go on a national campaign of sorts. We're trying to raise enough money so we can get PSAs out there, public service announcements, and advertisements in local newspapers, or in big newspapers, actually, you know, to take out an ad, $100,000, so we need to raise a lot of money. And go on speaking engagements, I like the idea of going to Rutgers, going to the universities, getting the kids involved. But, you know, here, the most simple thing is, we're trying to avoid another 9/11 at all costs, and we're doing it the wrong way. We need to know what happened with the first 9/11 before we can ever address all the ways to stop another 9/11. And we've been avoiding that for 13 years. So that's why we are so passionate about this, and I hope you'll all join us and do something more about it.
Yeah, I want to add a couple of things to what Terry just said. We're three weeks away from midterm elections. I can guarantee you that every member of Congress, and every candidate who's running to unseat a current incumbent member of Congress is more attentive to the demands of their constituents at this moment than at any time that we're going to have for the next two years. So we're at a critical moment where our voices are going to be heard if there is a clear and targeted message to be delivered. Those of you who've been down to Capitol Hill undoubtedly know that you walk into any member of Congress's office, and there's, depending on what their seniority is, there's either a very, very tiny or slightly larger reception area, and there's usually a couple of bright-eyed young people sitting there manning the phones. Well, those people have an extraordinarily important responsibility. Aside from basically just making sure the water cooler is filled and, you know, dealing with local logistics in the office, they're taking the incoming phone calls from constituents. And I want to emphasize constituents, if you call a member of Congress and you're not a voter in their district, the weight of your call is greatly reduced. But if you're calling your own congressman, those people in the front room are keeping tabs, how many calls came in? And what's the content of the call? What's the subject? And what's the demand that that constituent has placed? When you start to get a groundswell of demands on any given policy issue, you're going to get a very serious response. Example, in August, September of last year, 2013, for a whole variety of reasons, President Obama had ordered military strikes against Syria, and the Joint Chiefs of Staff opposed it. Why? Because at that point, it was already clear that the entire opposition was dominated by ISIS and other Al Qaeda-linked organizations, the Al-Nusra Front, the Islamic Front, and so the Joint Chiefs of Staff were adamantly opposed to military action. Number one, they did not want to replay what happened in Libya, and they saw the prospect of that, where you overthrow an unpleasant government that you may not like, but the net result is chaos and an opportunity for far more evil forces to come to the fore. In Libya, you have a combination of Al Qaeda running the country to the extent anybody is running it, and the rest of it is absolute chaos. So the military opposed it, and through a variety of factors, President Obama was forced to call off military strikes that he had already ordered. In other words, the ships were in the Mediterranean, the carriers were in the Persian Gulf, and they were ready to strike. They had 75 high priority targets that would have, I can tell you, would have wiped out the Syrian military and the government, would have opened the door for Al Qaeda and ISIS to take the place over. I shudder to think what would have happened had that gone forward. What happened instead is that the moment that the president basically deferred to the advice of the Joint Chiefs of Staff and a lot of other people, and decided to postpone it and actually go to Congress. So when it's convenient for the president to go to Congress because he wants to dodge the bullet on something, he's perfectly ready to go to Congress. Not when he's got his mindset on doing something, in which case he'll ignore Congress 99% of the time. But in this instance, he said, "All right, I'm going to back off, I'm going to go to Congress." And immediately, every congressional district in the United States, every congressional office was flooded with phone calls. The calls were running 100 to 1 against the US being dragged into another war in the Middle East, especially a war in which the victorious parties at the end of the day would have been Al Qaeda and ISIS and the rest of these monsters. So what you do makes a great deal of difference, and there's certain moments where the difference is even greater. So you've got a perfect confluence of events going on right now. You have elections in three weeks. People are going to be very attentive if there are issues that their constituents demand action on. And we are in Washington, whatever Congress is in session, and there's lots of pressure coming from many different organizations on this 28 pages issue. But the second issue is that we may be days, or hours, or at most weeks, away from a major new catastrophe that blows up the whole situation in the Middle East beyond where it stands even now, because you've got the support from, explicitly from Turkey, and in fact, duplicitously from Saudi Arabia, from Qatar, from the UAE, from Kuwait, for the ISIS attack on this Kurdish town of Kobani, right near the Turkish border. If Kobani falls to ISIS, the first likely thing to happen is a massacre, there's about 45,000 Kurds living in this town, and in all likelihood, you're going to get some kind of a massacre that's going to change the character of the whole situation. There was a report published by Bloomberg News two days ago that some of the leading members of ISIS, some of their most effective combat commanders in Iraq and in Syria are actually Chechens, who've been basically fighting this, I call it jihadist without borders operation, Pakistan, Afghanistan, Libya, Somalia, and now Iraq and Syria. They're basically people who've spent the last 10, 20, sometimes 30 years, basically engaged in guerrilla warfare, asymmetric warfare, and now really conventional armed operations with tanks and long-range artillery. And what these guys are saying is, Iraq and Syria are a prelude to going back to the Caucasus and bringing down Russia. And you've got a similar phenomenon, there's like 300 Uighurs from Western China who are also part of the ISIS fighting force. So this is something that's on the edge of becoming an even more catastrophic global crisis that extends to other countries that could mean this thing breaking out into a much larger general war. So what Terry just said is absolutely true. Let's get the truth out on what happened on September 11th, 2001. I can tell you, if those 28 pages had been made public and had been given serious coverage in the media, there had been a follow-on, serious investigation. The US Ambassador to Libya, Chris Stevens, I am certain would still be alive today. You would not have ISIS carrying out this murderous, satanic campaign that they're waging right now throughout the Middle East. So there's so much more riding on getting out the actual story, what's in the 28 pages, what's the level of Saudi and other complicity, and let the chips fall where they may. You've got to have confidence that if the American people are actually informed about what's going on, they will make an informed decision. But they've got to be prevented from being kept in the dark. And this is, right now, this is a strategic fight that is not about events that happened 13 and a half years ago. We're talking about events that have not yet happened and will have horrific consequences if they're not stopped. So Congress is a prime target, and we've got a three-week period in which we should just really turn up the heat and be very clear, not be spread out among 50 different issues. Honing like a laser on this question, and we can get a breakthrough.
I'm just going to go to our read-off, question number two, and we'll go to which, oh, yeah, in the back, he has his hand up next. So we'll go here, here, and then two people over there, okay? So for the person with the microphone, you can head back there to Les. And I'm going to read off this question. Question number two was from Georgette, and she asked the question, "Who do we vote for November 4th, whether Democrat or Republican, so that we can flip the Senate to get Obama impeached?" I'm going to actually just say something about that, and then just both move things along. Diane may have a comment as well. Jeff already hit of this. This is very difficult to address, because when you talk about the question of Obama and agency, it's difficult to attribute motives sometimes to Obama, because it's difficult to answer the question whether he actually exists. Almost nothing that comes out of the White House can actually be attributed to Obama, except that he seems to be willing to do whatever the worst possible initiative is that can be taken. And I want to point this out, because when you get a question like this, it's, the question may be well-meaning, but elections are effectively irrelevant. As you all know, you've heard, we've got something which people are referred to as an Ebola crisis. If it turned out that Ebola was a, was a weapon, biological weapon, that would be the best outcome we could have, because then at least we would know that there were a vaccine for it. If it is in fact what it appears to be, we have a very, very serious problem. And what happened was that the United States, many of the southern nations, Europe and so forth, were 11 months. However, it must be recognized that there are people, particularly coming from London, Prince Philip being the famous one, says, "In the event that he is reincarnated, he wants to come back as a virus to take care of the population problem." And these are people that Obama has been identified with, I suppose. This has to be said, because when you talk, when you're asking the question, "Who to vote for," one must understand, how many of us are going to be alive by then is actually a question. That's not a question of being alarmist, it's a question of recognizing what Jeff just said about our having to pull or focus... about our having to pool or focus our efforts on creating a position where the bodyguard of lies that has been our life since November 22, 1963 has to be lifted. Now, who you may like in the course of that, you know, whether you liked George W. Bush or you liked Barack Obama, you like this or that. You know, what version of strict nine you like is up to you. What's clear is the American people have a job to do. And that's why we need you here. And the issue for us is to activate you to activate others. So I'll just say that much. And maybe if Diane, you have something to discuss. Then we go to Les.
I'm not sure if I have this right. If it was Einstein who said that repeating the same thing over and over and expecting a different result is the definition of insanity. But think about how many times Americans go to the polls and say, "Gee, I've got these two morons running for office." And you didn't have that, I'll say, for the people in Texas because you had Keisha Rogers, my colleague, running for US Senate. So you had a choice there. But it often comes down to these two idiots. And you say, "Well, I just have to vote for the lesser of two evils." So you vote for the lesser of two evils. And lo and behold, you're shocked when the person is no good. I mean, that is ridiculous. So the question is, how to change that problem? And I think there are certain key inflection points, like the point that Jeff and Terry just made on the 28 pages. These congressmen and candidates are sensitive to what you think during elections. So you have a means of moving them. But I would think bigger, which is, if you look at what's just happened with this BRICS process, because actually what we have to do is change the way people think. And we actually have a task where we have to cause people who are mediocre to become good people. Now, how do you do that? What's the dynamic of that? And I was reflecting on what has occurred with this development. Because one reason why better people have become mediocre people is because they've become very pessimistic. Like, you all know someone who says, "That'll never happen. That'll never happen. I'm just one person." Well, that means that you're stupid. Sorry to say, you're stupid. Because you've been committed to not changing yourself and not changing someone else. Now, what has occurred with what happened with the BRICS development as I went through in the 80s, you know, LaRouche has been fighting for this kind of economic transformation for decades. And what happened? People were bumped off. People were thrown in jail. People were ousted from power. But now, you have a new dynamic where you have 48% of the world's population lined up together in one block. And therefore, nations and heads of state who were not that great, for example, the President of South Africa, Zuma, is not a great platonic humanist prince. However, it turns out that I think he was the one who actually put the proposal for a new development bank on the table. And he has become transformed by the process in terms of leading his country, even though there's so much to be desired in certain other aspects of his behavior. You can take Evo Morales, the President of Bolivia, who was put in there by George Soros. I mean, he was no good. He seemed to be no good. Raving, you know, depopulation, green energy, solar, et cetera. He now wants to become a leader in nuclear power and space technology. So what we have to think of is not the election. Please don't ask us to tell you a candidate, don't ask us to tell you, "This congressman is definitely going to be the key to getting done what we want." Because it's not going to work that way. We actually have to get a change in dynamic. And again, I'll say, I think that is why they are exerting such Nazi-like Goebbels effort to stop the American people from having any sense whatsoever that the rest of the world has gotten off this Titanic. Because if Americans knew that, they would never put up with the garbage that we are presented in the form of electoral politics.
My name's Les Jamison. And I totally concur with Mr. Steinberg about the three-week window of opportunity to lobby our congresspeople. I think it's kind of exciting. I mean, who wouldn't love to put the heat to these people who have been, you know, so unresponsive to such critical issues? So as of Monday, my letter's going out to Representative Blaskewitz. And we should be writing handwritten letters, okay? Much more.
I'm going to stop you right there. We should be emailing them. A handwritten letter that goes to Congress sits in a place for 30 days to get tested for all sorts of things. So if you write a letter to Congress, they're not getting it right away. If you email your letter to your congresspeople, they get it. That's a much better way.
What about their local state office?
Yes, you can send it to their local state office. You can also call their Washington DC office and just ask for a fax number. Have you ever had a fax machine and you want to fax a letter in? If you send it to their local office, yes, it will get there. But, you know, will it eventually get to the right person? A lot of these people have, what, seven and 10 offices in a state? I mean, I highly recommend emailing them, faxing your letter in, making those phone calls. Because the more they go like this one every day, and like he says, they log it and it's written down. And it's like, it's instantly there. So do that, but also take action with phone calls and emails.
Combination.
Yeah. Combination. And again, on this 28pages.org, he gives you all the information.
Right, there's a sample letter.
There's a sample letter. There's the phone number. There's the way to reach each one. I mean, and he's been reaching out to a lot of them that don't respond. It's pretty amazing.
Right. So, folks, as of Monday, we can get in action here. And a few years back, now the group I was actually with, actually had a letter-writing party with a number of people in the room. We supplied the envelopes, paper, stamps. There's an idea there. So that's one point. Next point is the book by Craig Unger, "House of Bush, House of Sod", is, I think, it's got critical information to understand about the history between the Bush family and the Saudi monarchy, which to me is, you know, underlying this whole effort that was first taken to declassify those pages to start with. And I think this needs to be exposed. The Bush family has business, collaborations, and interests going back to the 1970s. If that gets exposed, I think nationally and internationally, this will lend an awful lot of energy and effort to making the case why these pages are so important and why they were declassified in the first place. That's an outrage. That's a scandal. That's a travesty. Next, also, I think, integral to this whole effort to release the pages and to get to those contents is what was revealed by General Wesley Clark on CNN, where with his visit to the Pentagon days after 9/11, the day after, where he ran into a general that he knew from prior experiences, I believe, in the Balkans. The general told him that there was a pre-existing agenda to invade seven countries in the Middle East. This is based after 9/11, okay? And the list, you know, of course, Iraq, Afghanistan, Libya, Syria, Somalia. And the only one that hasn't been invaded, of course, is Iran. So what's that all about? And I think this needs to be made very clear to the American people as part of this effort. Because if they were to understand that this is part of a pre-existing agenda, and now, here we are in broil, still 13 years later, what is this all about? That will create such a realization, I think, in the American people that it's something far, far wider and greater that they've been brought to be aware of, that they now can start to connect some very, very major dots for themselves. And I think this will lend an awful lot of acceptance to supporting the release of these 28 pages.
Somebody, we had an order here. And after the next question, we will read the third here.
Name is Omar Smith. I'm New York area. This is a quick question. When the 28 pages get released, and they have to get released fully, are they released to the general public or is it exclusive to Congress and I too? Because I feel that I should, for future generations, that my family should see the kind of people that the British and my mom are.
To everyone, that's what we're asking. They're released to everyone, to the general public. You wouldn't see them.
This gentleman had his hand up before. Apparently, we missed him. Is it you, sir?
Yes.
Okay. Over here. Hold your hand up again.
Yes, my name is Morad Al Musavi. I live in Jersey, in the Princeton-Monroe area. Professor of French. So anyway, I really, I mean, there's so much information that in order to address or ask questions and things like that, it would take a long time. But I will try to summarize what I need to say in just two points. One is the drive for the release of the 28 pages. And from everything that you, Jeff, and everybody else have indicated, essentially points to show that the Saudis were bankrolling the whole effort of 9/11. And granted, even if you give that as granted, then what is the other half? The other half was the planning of that. And I don't think that's really being sort of put out in the right form or put out directly. We're just trying to talk about Saudi Arabia and all of that. And missing the point of trying to.
Well, I have an anecdote to that. I think what you should do, well, not just here. I'm going to interrupt you. But since you had the microphone, why don't you tell people a little bit about what actually happened in Egypt? So give a different context.
That was my second point.
Why don't you just do it?
Yeah, that was my, you want me to finish my first point? Or no? Okay. So to finish my first point, in fact, I can even say that in December 2001, there was an ex-CIA agent that gave about a three-hour interview on WBII in New York, detailing exactly how 9/11 happened and the role of the government in that having happened. So, and as I was addressing, pointing again, you keep harping on the 28 pages and you keep talking about the Saudis involved. Big deal. Saudis are bankrolling and they have done. And we all know that. But you're not pressuring sufficiently or pointing out sufficiently the government involvement or lack of credibility in terms of stating what their role was in 9/11. The second point is that, which is totally different, ISIS and Libya and Chris Stevens and all of that are totally different from the 9/11 situation. Everybody would have seen and have read the Republican, actually, it goes way before, about the attempt or the interest of the United States to redraw the map of the Middle East. Having the first drawing of the map of the Middle East goes back to 1911, 1915, 1916. And the Sykes-Peake Treaty that was formed, and the British and the French, you know, split the Middle East every one of them. And in Condoleezza Rice's own statements and her own of that, in November of 2011 or 2012, she indicated that we have to be, we have to have a role this time. We cannot allow this redraw of the Middle East to take place without having a role in doing it. And in essence, the way that it has been done, and that was through the State Department, US State Department, which created groups in various Arab countries that put them under what is known as the Youth Alliance Forum. And these groups of young people that were essentially distributed NGOs in the various Arab countries, their purpose was to, you know, under the guise of trying to get democracy and all of that, was really to create what is referred to as what Condoleezza Rice has, so called, creative chaos. It's the creative chaos that she was planning since then that has happened in the Middle East in the last three years, including Egypt. Now, when you talk about Egypt, what, Egypt is lucky and Egyptian-Americans are very, very happy and lucky to have had this Sisi come onto the scene is because he, as a Director of Military Intelligence for so many years at his job, he obviously had seen what was happening. And he obviously saw the attempt of Barack, of the US administration. I'm not going to call Barack Obama or otherwise because they're all, they have their hands in this anyway. And he saw the attempt to really break up Egypt by putting in the Muslim Brothers and siding in with the Muslim Brothers and wanted really to break up Egypt to four pieces. And he said, "No." And the Egyptian people were 100% behind him. And that's why you don't see Muslim Brothers in Egypt anymore. In fact, they have been labeled as a terrorist organization. And we're actually calling for the US to call, you know, to identify the Muslim Brothers as a terrorist organization. So my point being is that, so Sisi recognized, and he said, "I can only save Egypt, and I'm going to work on that." And he worked on saving Egypt from this mess, the creative chaos that was generated by the youth groups going back to 2005, 2006. Some of these people are now in jail. The 6th of April Movement leadership are now in jail in Egypt because their role was recognized as infiltrators that were supported by the CIA, by the State Department, and to sort of bring about creative chaos in Egypt. And that, thank God, did not happen. And Sisi is still committed to keeping the map of the Middle East as it is. And he's doing it as best to see that Syria come out of this, align as one state instead of three or four. Iraq should also become the same thing. Libya is working with Libya. So I guess what I'm trying to say is that there is so much more to what's happening that the 28 pages is really not a major portion of that at all. And if you present that, the 28 pages, you should really point out that we want this, not because of the Saudi involvement as bankrollers, but we want this not because of the Saudi involvement as bankrollers, but we want this because we want to show our own governance involvement in 9/11. Thank you.
I apologize, I don't believe any of that deserved a round of applause. To stand there and say that the bankroller, so what, Saudi Arabia, so what, does that really matter? It most certainly does absolutely matter. Because if you cut off the funding, you don't have 9/11, you don't have terrorist attacks, you don't have ISIS, you don't have al-Nusra, you don't have all of these problems. If you go after the funding, if you go after the assholes that create these terrorist organizations, you have to go after that in order to stop it. And don't stand here in front of me and ever say, it doesn't matter who bankrolled it, because it most absolutely certainly does. It was a big portion of it, he said it, and I'm just reacting to it.
The point was, we know all of that.
No, we don't know all of that. The American public does not know all of that. They most absolutely, no, it's not the American public's fault that they don't know it. If you keep classified documents away from people, they can't know the truth. So getting the truth out there is very much important, and Jeff told you. There's so much more to it than just the funding. Actually, that part has been let out. We know a lot about that. But there is so much more, and that's what Jeff was saying.
Because the 48-page documentary, it was a coup d'etat, it wasn't, a portion of it was Saudi Arabia. It was a coup d'etat. How can people not know that it wasn't a coup d'etat by now?
If you don't think that the 28 pages opens up a window on the larger unanswered questions, then you're sadly mistaken. Look, I probably know about as much as anybody about the details of the Saudi involvement in the whole 9/11 operation, the funding and other things as well. And frankly, I could write all of that, and I'm a very lucid writer, I'm very verbose. I could write even five, 10 pages. So there's a hell of a lot more in the 28 pages. And my caution is very simply this: We can go off in toots in 20 different directions and get nowhere. Or we can make an agreement here among ourselves that we're going to zero in on something that represents a crucial strategic flank to force all of those questions to be opened up. Believe me, I'm familiar with every variation on every potential conspiracy that might have or might not have happened related to 9/11. And, you know, you could fill New York Public Library with material on that. You could spend your entire life reading through everything and die having accomplished nothing. We've got a strategic flank, we've got an opening, we have a large number of members of Congress who have read this document and they've, look, I'm not going to name names, but one of the members of Congress, I was sitting in his office. He said, if the 28 pages comes out publicly, people will be shocked about what they learn about the United States, not about Saudi Arabia. So the point is, yeah, but the point is, Terry's also right, don't underestimate the funding. And let's go one step further. Look, one of the crimes that was committed by the FBI in the context of 9/11 is that there were hundreds, probably, in fact, thousands, I correct myself, thousands of pages of documentation about a whole other cell of 9/11 hijackers in the Sarasota, Florida area, including Mohammed Atta, who was the, you know, supposed ringleader of the whole operation, who were in regular contact with a wealthy Saudi businessman who lived in one of these gated communities. The FBI had thousands of pages of documents on this, 80,000 pages. And not a single piece of paper was provided to the Joint Congressional Committee investigating 9/11, despite the fact that they were asked for it. And it was only under a Freedom of Information Act lawsuit that was carried out by people who had an inkling about what was going on, there were locals in the area, that you get to the bottom of it. I happen to know that among the three 9/11 hijackers who were regularly in and out of the residence of this wealthy Saudi who was an advisor to one of the top members of the royal family, one of these guys was being trained by US Special Forces. And that's been, you know, published in an incidental anecdote in a book on a completely unrelated topic. Look, we've got all of this stuff pulled together, a lot of it. But we've got to force the issue, because the real question is, what kind of shock is it going to take to wake up the American people to stop tolerating what's been done to destroy this country from the inside, from the outside, you name it? You know, you want to get the snapshot that tells a thousand words about what's being raised about the US side of this. Three days after 9/11, there is a photograph that was released by the White House of Prince Bondar standing over President Bush smoking a great big cigar. It's like it was a victory cigar. So the point is that we've got to start somewhere. Now, I want to just address another question, the second part of your comment, because I think it's extremely important to recognize that what President Al-Sisi has done goes way beyond simply suppressing and shutting out the Muslim Brotherhood. If he had done that, the Egyptian situation would have been temporarily stable at best. And within a year, two years at the most, you would have had another revolution. And quite possibly, the Muslim Brotherhood would have been once again back on the streets leading. What General Al-Sisi did, President Al-Sisi, goes way beyond that. And it has everything to do with the developments around the BRICS country. Because you've got a segment of the population of this planet, governments representing well over half of the 7 billion people on this planet, who've decided that they're no longer going to basically succumb to the blackmail coming out of institutions like the IMF and the World Bank and what's called the Washington Consensus. And so what happened is that President Al-Sisi knew that he had 15, 20 million Egyptians out on the street demanding a change in government and that he has an obligation to them. And what he's done, as Diane mentioned briefly, is launched a complete economic revival. He dusted off plans that were drafted in the early 1980s. We know some of the people who were directly involved in drafting these development plans, greening the Western Desert, the expansion of the Suez Canal, other major development projects, nuclear power plants on the Mediterranean coast for further desalination. He recognized, as a leader of his country, not just simply a good military patriotic leader, but he recognized that there were bread and butter economic issues that had to be addressed immediately and that momentum was everything. You can't drop the ball when you've been basically given one brief opportunity to turn things around. And so what he's done is not only spectacular in a much broader sense, the kind of vision for his country that we saw with Roosevelt when he came in at the beginning in the middle of the Depression and put millions of people back to work within a year. So, you know, all of these things are qualities of leadership that we've got to force to be revived in this country. And again, I think, you know, we're here discussing a specific political flank, namely, the fight to force open these 28 pages. And I can guarantee you that the most efficient way to redress all of the questions, all of the issues that are on the minds of everybody in this room, is by doing that. And, you know, let the chips fall where they may. But, you know, someone said earlier, and I know, sorry, Terry Nady, we need a brand-new de novo investigation, but where everything is out on the table for the investigators and for the American people. We don't know very much about the operational dimensions of 9/11, other than that we know the fairy tale version of it was impossible. 19 people sneak into the country, none of them speak English, none of them have any so-called background flying airplanes, and within a period of a year, they're able to carry out the most spectacular covert asymmetric warfare operation in modern history. Forget it. It didn't happen that way. It couldn't have happened that way. And Senator Graham, who's been, you know, really the shining star in this fight, has basically said, there were Saudi and other intelligence operations that were backing these guys up. We know it in San Diego, we now know it in Sarasota, Florida. What about Patterson, New Jersey? What about Herndon, Virginia? What about Arlington, Texas? There's, it's very clear that there was a pre-existing intelligence operation in place. My own suspicion is that multi-governments were involved in this. The Saudis are the window into the whole thing. Squeeze them like a good prosecutor would squeeze a mafia trial, and people will start squealing and will begin to get to the bottom of what really happened. But don't drop the ball on this 28 pages issue, because it's the flank, it's the window that opens up the whole thing, and we should make sure that we don't let go of Tiger Tail right now.
We have 4:20, and we are going to have to stop in 10 minutes. And so I want people to know that. There'll be about 15 minutes in which we have to clear the hall, because it locks up automatically at a certain point, you know. Unless you really like to read, you don't want to be here all weekend, just wanted to say that. So, yeah, over there first, can we do that? Right, well, Patrick first and then Fran, I guess.
Hello. My name is Patrick, and I'm from the once constitutional state of Connecticut. Anyway, 9/11, Greenwich had a big, big, what do you call it, ceremony. And all the top brass were there, the first electman, Senator Scott Frantz, and all the big people. Anyway, I was in my uniform and I listened to, you know, all the, it was like fire departments and from all over the place. And they all came up to this monument, a piece of steel from the 9/11, and they would put wreaths and different things on it. And I went up and I saluted, and then I turned back. And they had many speakers, and it was all about, you know, the people that had perished and the families. So after it was all over, I handed out to everybody the 28 pages on 9/11, which I had one first electman say, this is inappropriate. I said, really? I said, you know, the 28 pages is what really happened in 9/11. And it has to be declassified. And they all got these papers, so everybody at that ceremony, it must have been 60 people. So they all know about 9/11 now. And I even brought it to a meeting, a town meeting with the representatives of the district. And it was like 20 of us. And I had all copies of the 9/11, and I handed them out, and I said, I want everybody to read it. And what's in there is what you got to do. Because we're not going to go through another war or anything unless we find out what happened in 9/11. So that's all I wanted to say. There's some, what do you call it, debates coming up, so I'm just going to head up to the mic and tell them 9/11 and find out where the 28, to declassify it.
Hi, my name is Randy Clayne from East Orange, New Jersey. I've been with LaRouche for about five-plus years. But I just want to pose one question regarding these 28 pages and all this confusion around the world. When I look back at 9/11, when I was working in New York City that day, and after 9/11 had happened, it seems, you know, being a retired nurse, that there always seems to be some type of disease that comes after this. I mean, in 9/11, we had the anthrax scare. And now we're dealing with this Ebola allegedly coming out of Africa, and you've had a person die here down in Texas. And then also in this country, there are children dying from some type of upper respiratory illness. We had a death in New Jersey last week. So I wonder if this is all tied up, you know, I know they're trying to kill us. But, I mean, gee whiz, come on, folks, we got to wake up to whatever's going on.
I'll say one thing about that for a minute, and then we will go right to the next person. In subsequent discussion, we can talk about this. 1974, Leonard LaRouche and his organization first talked about the strategy of the Fourth World, something that Robert McNamara had proposed. One billion people in the world redlined in Africa, Asia, and South America to be killed. That same year, a document was written called National Security Study Memorandum 200. It's a sort of a co-authorship document involving George Bush, who was at the head of CIA, Kissinger, some others. Now, they didn't write the text, but they were the people that outlined it. And that document talked about the implications for national security of the United States of population growth. Subsequent to that, what occurred, as everyone is aware, is that there were various movements in the United States for depopulation, all sorts. The anti-nuclear movement was part of that. Whether the people in the anti-nuclear movement recognized they were part of that or not is not that important, but that's what it was. What's happened recently, ever since 2009, November, when Obama's attempts to support the proposals of the British Commonwealth and the Queen of England to have China and Russia and the African nations reduce their carbon footprint, it was completely rejected, corrected. So what began as a process, this is what we've seen going on throughout Africa, particularly with Afcom and so on, of this sort of advancement of depopulation. This is not only not unconnected to what we're talking about. The truth is, the American people are terrified to do much of anything. In fact, one of the problems that goes on here is you contrast Patrick Terry-Calm's report about what he's doing to these assertions about the American government did it. Actually, we don't know who did 9/11. You say you know, that means you don't. Those who say they know, don't. What we do know is, any serious campaign by all Americans to do anything that works will actually reveal everything. And what will happen in meetings, including meetings like this, is that various of those, whether through anxiety or other design, will attempt to shut that down. Some people will just do it out of anxiety. You know, there's a point where you get to where you stop all the complaining. Everybody said, ah, yeah, but how about doing something? Oh, well, I'll see you later. That's what goes on, okay? So...
My name is Bob Thornton, I'm going to be real quick. There are just two things I was going to mention. One is misperception of treason, the other is a movie, a little video, 9/11 Eyewitness, Oboka. For people who saw that, it was done by Rick Siegel. After the first plane hit, about 48 minutes to an hour before the first building came down, you saw a number of very powerful explosions go off at the bottom of the building that measured something like 2.3 on the Richter scale. They replaced explosives there. A lot of nuclear experts around the world know about that. There were maybe third- and fourth-generation micro-nuclear weapons that exploded in the building. The second thing is misperception of treason is probably a better way to go in the federal court against a lot of politicians, because they have loyalties to other people. They don't want to accuse each other of treason. But if we all accuse them of not doing what's necessary to bring the truth out, misperception of treason, then to protect them all themselves and also to just get the truth out, they're going to be very anxious to go on misperception. And these are lawsuits out of the Southern District of New York by the citizens, in my opinion.
We have just time for one more question, because we have 4:29. Nancy Marcel, I don't know who's answer first. Somebody take a rep volunteer. You want yours?
Just on the absolute importance of, my name is Therese Mallory from Philadelphia. I'm an organizer. But on the absolute importance of the 28 pages, one thing that you said, Jeff, that really struck me is how the congressmen that read this were struck, aside from the information on Saudi Arabia, of the true nature of American intelligence and American security. And then, you know, we have put some stuff out, yourself included. I must have read your article on NSA five, six times, on the Five Eyes, and on the fact that 70% of American intelligence is prioritized and that the NSA is under the control of the... American intelligence is prioritized, and that the NSA is under the control of the communication headquarters, which is the British NSA. And, you know, we're going to find out, and I think the 28 pages will help the American people understand and us understand better on how there is no American intelligence anymore. That answers the questions of what, about the failure of American intelligence regarding 9/11, the failure of American security. A lot of our airports, I understand, correct me if I'm wrong, have prioritized security, they're not even run by people in this country. Can you respond to that?
I think you got to distinguish between an intelligence failure and a policy failure. Remember that through a whole sort of back-and-forth process, ultimately, one of the very rare cases occurred where one of the president's daily briefings actually made public. These are, these are the compilations from like 16 intelligence agencies that are compressed into some sort of readable format that are presented every day, seven days a week to the president as the most pressing intelligence issues that he should be worried about. And there were pre-warnings on 9/11, just as the, I mean, two weeks ago on Sunday, President Obama appeared on 16 Minutes and basically said that there was an intelligence failure related to ISIS. We didn't know how tough they were, and we had over expectations about the role of the Iraqi military. Well, in print of fact, he'd been briefed on all of that stuff. In fact, in November of 2013, the then Prime Minister of Iraq, Nouriel Malaki, was at the White House. And he said, "Look, this ISIS thing is out of control, please step in and bomb them now because we know they're getting ready to launch a massive offensive, and we'd really like your help in knocking them out when they're weak and they're vulnerable, because if you wait a few more months, forget it." He got the same briefings from the head of the Defense Intelligence Agency, General Flynn, and from others in the intelligence community. So, you know, there's the issue of, you know, there's clearly mistakes, there's clearly things that are done wrong, there's clearly corruption and everything else, and, you know, a good deal of that has now come out on the NSA and other things. But it's very important to also not miss the fact that you've got to hold your policymakers accountable for taking appropriate action. When there are legitimate warnings, you can't ignore them. It came out last week that since he came into office as president, President Obama has only attended 40% of his presidential daily briefings. So, you know, what I'm saying is, is that we've got to be precise, and we, because if we are the American people, and ultimately, the sovereignty is ours, we're going to have to get a hell of a lot better at holding people accountable, because we're doing our own homework. The founding fathers created a republic, not a pure democracy, and they understood that citizenship is not only a right, but it's an obligation. In other words, it's unconstitutional to be stupid and to ignore the reality that you're living in. So...
Okay, we're going to bring you to a conclusion. We've still got about 10 to 15 minutes, if you want to come up and meet any of the panelists and so forth. We have, I'd like for you to do that. Four weeks from either today or tomorrow, there will be another meeting in New York City of the Schiller Institute, for which we are asking all of you to organize. Details will be forthcoming. I'd like you to join me in thanking our panelists for what they had to say today.